We're gonna go at six o'clock. Um, now we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
With liberty and justice.
I guess I got ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm having bad reception. Okay, um, a roll call please?
Okay, um, President Faupoua.
Here.
Trustee Santos?
Present.
Trustee Dos?
Present.
And trustee Lex? Vice president.
Okay, I'd like somebody to approve of the uh agenda.
Uh, I would, I moved that we approved the agenda as presented.
Okay, second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Um, approve of the minutes from our regular meeting of May seventeen twenty twenty-two?
My motion.
Uh, second to approve the minutes?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. Now we have some presentations. Um, we are fortunate to have um, our Daily City Youth Poet Laureate Chloe Chu with us today. Okay, um, Ms. Jayla, are you gonna be able to introduce her? Please?
Um, unless, uh, Brian, if you want to introduce her as the rep from DCPLA. DCPLA has established this amazing. Laureate.
Oh, of course, I'd be, I'd be happy to, um. Hello, everybody, my name is Brian Dossi with the DCPLA, uh, and tonight, uh, we're, uh, so, so, uh, so blessed to have, um, our Daily City Youth Poet Laureate for twenty-two, twenty-three, Chloe Chow with us. And I believe Chloe, you're gonna do, uh, are you gonna do a poem for us?
Yeah, sure, I have one.
Okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, sure, I'd be glad to. So, um, I actually have a poem that I submitted to a magazine a while back about like the heat and like fire, basically, which kind of reminded me of like today's heat, since today is a pretty hot day. Yeah, so this poem is a hyphen, which means it's a prose poem, and at the end of the poem, there's a hygru. And this poem is titled Case Study of Shaman Data and the Burning of nineteen eighty-six. Museum, screaming white walls, the sunset sky burning red above clouds. Moths circling around the heat of candles on the steps. Earth speaks from the mouth of longing, and governance is not always longing. Front of the Cultural Palace of Shaman on November twenty-third nineteen eighty-six, the first time they burned their earth. Twenty-nine years prior, the first rocket was launched into space, a burning hot star searching thing. The earth burns like a bomb, and you must remember that when you're smoke, there's fire. This is to say, earth may not reach its true meaning until it is burned. This is to say, the aftermath of burning is emptiness, and in the wake of ember, earth is miraculously alive. We hold the joy of earth as a burning hot star searching thing and wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chloe, that was beautiful. Okay, um, directors' report?
Okay, um, so we'll jump right in, and, um, I, I think at least one of you have had, had the pleasure of meeting one of our newest team members. Christine McCallalat. Sorry. Um, she is our branch manager and librarian for the Bay Shore Library. And she has the ground running, she is uh, applied for and received, she applied successfully for an LSTA grant, and so she's joining us this evening to talk about what that grant will, um, build, and we're very excited about that. She has a, a little short parallel point, and, and, um, take it away, Christine.
Okay, thanks, Jayla, uh, okay, let me, um, share my screen here. Okay, so, um, yes, hi, everybody, like Jayla said, I'm, um, a new librarian with Daily City Public Library. Um, I'm really excited to be here and serving this community and, um, excited to be working on this project. So, thank you for letting me share, um, a few minutes tonight. Um, some background on this project. Um, some of you may have already heard about, um, the California State Library Parks Pass. Um, the California State Parks and the California State Library teamed up um, to provide, um, passes to the libraries, um, to check out just like a book. So you can walk into, um, any of your libraries in California and, um, check out a pass, it's, um, if there's one available, it's, um, it's a hang tag for your car. Um, and use it and keep it for, um, the lending period um, that the library has determined, and keep it and, um, use it to gain access to, uh, most of the state parks. Um, so one of the, a couple of the major goals of this project um, include promoting equitable access to our state's, uh, public resources and promoting the mental health, um, benefits of getting out in nature. So when we heard about this, um, this project and, um, and that they would be accepting applications for grants up to five thousand dollars for programs to promote the pass program, we thought that story walks, uh, would be a good project. Um, they fit in neatly with the past programs' goals, um, as well as the library's goals of promoting literacy and meeting people where they are. Um, with the pandemic, um, still going on, people are still very interested in being outside. Um, and they make a nice addition to the sites that we're looking at. So what is a story walk exactly? Um, it's frames along a path, um, that allow you to, um, walk along the path and read the story, um, experience the outdoors and the story at the same time. The idea comes from, um, Montpelier, Vermont resident, um, Anne Ferguson, who worked with her local library to create the first story walk, and San Francisco has a story walk in the Presidio. Um, that's that picture in the lower right there. Um, so this is a typical frame. Um, typically, it's a powdered aluminum frame. Um, you can see the bottom of the frame can be unscrewed, um, and then you can insert the pages of the story between two acrylic sheets. So the sites that we're looking at are, um, Gellert, Gellert Park and, uh, Bay Shore Heights Park. And, um, both have walking tracks that work well for this project. Um, the grant is for five thousand dollars, and that's enough to comfortably cover, um, enough frames for one of the sites, but we are looking at either starting with less frames per site or, um, and/or working with the DCPLA and other sources to secure additional funding for more frames. So some of the titles that we're looking at, um, presenting in these story walks is The Hike by Alison Thurrell, Good Night Veggies by Diana Murray, Wonder Walkers by Misha Archer, um, Birds by Kevin Henke, Swirl by Swirl by Joyce Sidman, and Little Dandelion Seeds the World by Julia Richardson. Um, all of the titles that we're looking at fit in with, uh, the theme of appreciating nature. So for programs, um, we were thinking that we can include the story talk, um, story walks in library tours. Um, we can invite rangers from the California State Parks or the county parks to lead story times. Uh, we can invite fire to, um, to help us present wildfire preparedness story times. Um, we can do outdoor activities like planting and composting. Um, there's lots of, lots of fun things that we can do outside. Uh, as far as the details, we're working with Public Works and Parks. Um, they will be helping us determine the exact, um, locations for each of the frames. Um, they'll help us select the best frames and they'll install them for us. Uh, and then we'll work with recreation and state and county parks, um, on the programming. There are two ways to add new stories, um, we're thinking of adding stories every few months. Um, we can either work with physical copies, um, or we can scan copies and, um, and then print them out for insertion. Um, the only thing with working with digital copies is that we have to make sure to get copyright permissions from the publisher in advance. Uh, but this method, you know, allows us to work with the size and maybe fit more pages in each frame. So that's all I have, um, are there any questions?
Well, Christine, that's an awesome project right there, and, um, I was wondering, it's great, I really like it, and, um, the fact that Bay Shore is one of the sites, um. Would you be so, would you be available or, um, have time to do a presentation at Bay Shore, um, board, the school district? The same presentation that you're presenting today? So that they will be aware of what's going on?
Of course.
Is that okay with you? Okay, I'll shoot Jayla our next board meeting.
Okay.
The, uh, dates and time, but thank you for that, and thank you for taking the time to, um, write and, um, complete that grant. I can't wait for the completion of it for both sites.
Yes, thank you, it's very exciting, thank you.
And, and welcome.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, or actually, I, I feel like Dr. Lexi may have raised her hand first. Um, no, I was just curious about, um, what was, what were, was you all thinking about the first couple of sites? And then what other additional sites are you hoping that you can expand in Daily City?
Well, um, those are the two sites that, the, two of the four locations that have walking tracks. Um, I'm sure that, you know, we'd love to expand if we can. Um, I'm sure that Jayla, you know, would be able to, um, help us out with ideas for any additional sites.
We were initially looking at these two sites because they're adjacent to our public libraries, um, and they do have, have nice walking paths. And Geller, Geller gets a, a huge amount of foot traffic, so, but it's less, maybe less suitable because there's also a lot of balls flying around. Very, very well used.
Makes sense, yeah, I was also curious about San Bruno Mount, like that, the trail at San Bruno Mountain, because I know they have those planet displays there, and, and the childcare that I live next to, they go there often for those like planet displays, I was just like, oh, like, I think that could be also a good place to, for just kids to walk by and see stories and stuff, but.
Yeah, that sounds like a really good idea, um. The only complication I would see with that is that San Bruno Mountain is actually one of the, the parks that's not included with the Parks Pass Program, um, just because it's under uh, state and county, um, management, for some weird reason, it's not included.
Part bureaucratic, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you.
Uh, Christine, are the, uh, two projects at, uh, Bay Shore and Gellert fully funded, or do you need additional funding to actually, uh, complete the number of stations that would tell the stories?
Uh, yes, great question, um, ideally, we have twenty, uh, frames per site. Um, the five thousand dollars, uh, twenty frames because, uh, most picture books are around thirty to thirty-five pages. So with twenty frames, we could, um, we could cover most picture books. Um, the five thousand dollars would comfortably pay for twenty frames. So our plan is to, um, to maybe start with less frames per site. Um, but at the same time, look for more funding.
Is there any chance that the state would provide any additional funding, uh, since it's clearly an idea worth supporting?
Well, unfortunately, the, the grants, um, are up to five thousand dollars, so so we applied for the max, um, and we got the max, so that's good.
Okay, well, my compliments to you, you know, getting this going.
Thank you.
Occasionally, they do, um, a second round or an additional round of, of a subsequent year, so we'll definitely keep our eye out for other opportunities.
Yes.
And from all sources.
Yeah, welcome aboard, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is something I, I think that, um, I mean, the timing is perfect, but, but we've actually kind of been talking about it a little bit for, for a long time. And so it was amazing that Christine's able to kind of finally bring this closer to, to reality. And always, um, has been such an amazing advocate for the Bay Shore neighborhood.
Just, just curious, um, would we be, um, what is the question? Is it going to be, uh, requiring a high maintenance when it comes to any? You know, nowadays with some teenagers, you know, acting a goofball, or, you know, um, would it cost a lot to, you know, to maintain those?
Um, with, yes, that's a, that's a really good question, um, that's, and a concern that's shared by, uh, parks. Um, graffiti, we think would be easy to clean. Um, the acrylic sheets, you know, if they get scratched, we would have to replace, but um, parks, I believe, said that they have, they have acrylic sheets, um, that's a, that's the kind of thing that we should be able to replace, um, fairly inexpensively.
Oh, that's nice. Okay, well, that's good to know. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, the other one on the Clean Air Centers Program?
Ah, yes, that's me, um, Dr. Lex, did you have a question, or?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I forgot to lower my hand, I'm not, you know, I'm lucky to get my hand up. Then I forget to lower it, thank you, Jayla.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen, I have a presentation as well, but it's very brief. It's, um, not, not necessarily quite as fun and whimsical as the, um, as the story walks, um, but I, nevertheless, I was pretty excited about that. Um, we have received, um, some air cleaners, some very, very high-end air cleaners meant for, um, kind of commercial or school or government buildings, um, as part of the wildfire smoke clean air centers for vulnerable populations incentive pilot program. So this allows the Daily City's libraries to become essentially clean air centers. Um, this was one of those, um, projects that, excuse me, that started with funding at the state level, and it swirled around and, and, um, parts of it came, um, down to our level. Um, so through the, the Bay Area specific program, and then through the county of San Mateo, um, these air filtration units were purchased and distributed to different cities, um, and Daily City was able to take advantage, um, and acquire quite a number of them, um, so we can put them in all of our public libraries as well as some of our other public facilities. And the, the goal here is that during, you know, times of, of choking smoke, which sadly, we expect likely happen again, um, the libraries and these other community centers can become a respite for people who maybe otherwise aren't able to find shelter from, from that spoke, and, and I know particularly for people with asthma and, and other breathing difficulties, um, really hard. Um, it also allows the library to, to remain open and operating, and everyone focused on, you know, providing good services, um, nice clean air. Um, the, it was a very bureaucratic process, we have a memorandum of understanding with the county for these air filters, um, at which the city council authorized at their last meeting. Um, and we have agreed that we're going to store and maintain these units, um, that we will de- deploy them, of course, from the, there is hazardous air, um, that will maintain them and provide, uh, reports to the air quality district um, about their use and, um, give them proper acknowledgement in any publicizing that we do. Um, the cost to us is just replacement of the help filter in each of the units after four thousand hours of use, and we would pay that cost. Um, and these are pretty substantial units. Um, they are about four feet tall and two feet wide and one foot thick. Um, after five years, the, um, ownership would transfer to the city of Daily City, which is, is good because that way you don't have to worry about how they're deployed, you know, for eternity, and we're able to dispose of them when the time comes. And, um, so, but these arrived while I was on vacation last week, and, um, it was all lovely in theory, and they're now stacked up in our community room. So they will be deployed to the various libraries, um, hopefully shortly, and hopefully long before we, we meet them. But we were, we're very grateful to receive this opportunity for these units, and hopefully, um, it will allow people in Daily City to find a comfortable place to breathe easy when, when the time comes. Did anyone have any questions about it?
Yeah, Dr. Lex has this handy.
Um, yeah, Jayla, first of all, let me say, I think this is a really great idea. And back when we were having the Orange Haze Days a couple of years ago, and I was thinking that our library should be, uh, a place where people could go and breathe, you know, clean air, uh, you know, sort of a refuge from this environmental disaster, if they didn't have any other options. Uh, but my question is, will this service only be available during regular library hours? And won't that be a real limitation, especially in our smaller branches? Uh, or, you know, you know, when the library closes, does everyone have to leave and then come back in the morning, or, you know? What, what's the thinking around that?
Yeah, that, that was definitely something that we, we looked at, because, I, I mean, ideally, you'd like it to be available twenty-four seven, but it just, um, without any additional resources, we wouldn't be able to expand our hours. Um, but putting them in some of the community centers will definitely, um, for instance, the War Memorial Community Center, so if, even if the library is closed, or the Bay Shore Community Center, when the library is closed, if there's activities going on in those other areas, then that will extend the amount of, of time that, that the space is available. But we, we don't currently have, have, uh, resources to expand hours.
Uh, do you know if the city council has talked about this in any policy sort of way, uh, in terms of, should this happen in the future? You know, we are committed to providing twenty-four seven service until the air quality improves, or you know, or something less than that.
I, I do not know of any conversations that have taken place, they, they, they reviewed and approved the, the memorandum of, of understanding. Um, but it was on the consent agenda, it was not a subject of discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Would we be able to, um, have our own policy on that? In addition to all the policies, if we're going to have that in the facilities in the libraries?
That's correct. Um, for, for expanding the hours? Or, or just around our, how we're using?
Yes.
Um, well, the, it would be in accordance with the terms of the memorandum of understanding. Um, we definitely need to make sure the staff, um, because we did, did just receive the, make sure the staff are familiar with the units and, um, and the process for that, it, it might be more of a procedure, but I can, I can certainly explore whether.
Okay.
We have a, I mean, we have our emergency closure policy, which is sort of the opposite of this, right? If, if it became really uncomfortable or hazardous, we would actually shut down, but this is to allow us to, to maintain and, and be, have an even better environment than the outside.
And where exactly they're going to be stored at?
They're, they're fairly substantial in size, um, so, it, I'm expecting that they will be stored on site at each of the locations. Um, but I, I'm gonna reach out, um, to Public Works and just make sure that that, that works for them.
Well, those, those are nice, so we have clean air to breathe, and then we also have a story walk project when you're outside, another clean air. Very beautiful, thank you so much, okay. Uh, trustees' report, um, the first one on the list is subcommittee's report. Um, before I go on, I wanted to thank you, um, Dr. Lex, vice president for taking over and leading the meeting when I wasn't here last time. And, um, I guess these trustees' report were based on what? Um, some of you guys were already discussing from the, from the meeting prior to this meeting. So sub, subcommittee report?
When I saw that on the agenda, I assumed that that referred to the B project, is that your understanding channel?
Oh, yes, that, that's the current standing subcommittee, yeah.
Okay.
Let me.
So I do apologize for the subcommittee for the, um, B project, um, that we never had a chance to, um, to sit down and have a good conversation on that, or even a meeting about it. Um, both you and me have way off schedules. You know, my schedule, by the time you're available, I'm way busy, by the time I'm available, you're down first to sleep for the day. So, you know, so maybe somewhere down the line, we'll, we'll, we'll make time that some of, you know, both of us will agree to the time regardless of our personal schedules. And at the same time, I don't want us to bombard it with, with, um, with the B project. I know that I listened to the last meeting that the DCPLA are most likely, or they're gladly to take upon this project, and I salute to Brian Dossi um, for, for, for being part of this, and I apologize if I came short on this due to, to, due to, um, work and family and other hats that I wear. But we'll do make time, Dr. Lex.
Well, Teresa, it, it's, uh, you know, a joint difficulty that we have in terms of meshing our schedules. And I mentioned that at the last meeting, that, you know, we had tried and just were not successful. Uh, and given that, uh, I've I've been working independently, and, uh, you know, Brian can comment on DCPLA, but I did speak with Victoria this morning, and, uh, she said that it was discussed, and I'll let Brian talk about that. Uh, you know, what we proposed is that it be a joint venture, uh, project between DCPLA and, uh, the trustees, uh, with no explicit expectation that DCPLA would fund the project, that would be an option, but, you know, that's not what why we want to work jointly on this. Uh, DCPLA is a, uh, an organization that has IRS five oh one C three status, which means if people contribute to the organization, uh, they receive a tax to, um, I'm gonna say deferment, but that's not very, uh, tax deduction uh, that they can apply for on their annual income tax, uh, if the way they file qualifies for that. Uh, and as I was talking with Victoria this morning, you know, I was saying that I, I think that there are a lot of synergies, uh, between DCPLA and the trustees. Uh, but in any case, let me go to the other, uh, piece of this, and that's urban beekeeping or abeol. Uh, I spoke with, uh, Erin Jackson, and she and I are going to be meeting on July first, that's a week from Friday, and driving around, uh, the different library sites in Daily City, just so she has a firsthand idea of the context of the library, what they look like, uh, you know, the landscaping, uh, situation around it, is it packed with housing, or is it like ceremone, where you know, there are open fields? And, uh, then, um, you know, we'll get. And uh, then, um, you know, we'll get some feedback from her. Uh, as to possible feasibility or recommendations that we can take forward to. Uh, the library staff and to the city staff. And see if they agree that these are possible sites uh for a hive. Uh, you know, and just keep uh nibbling at the project, you know, until we move toward fulfillment. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that people may have at some point, but at this. Time, I'd like to ask Brian to comment on the discussion at D C P L A.
Yeah, tha- thank you, Bill, and and if I may, just really quickly, um, the D C P L A at its last board meeting, I think, which was just last week. Did vote unanimous unanimously to support um the the library board of trustees. Um, in any project um regarding the 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 bees and in the. Um, in the bee in the bee project, you know, what that support would look like, I think it's it's yet to be determined. I think, like as Bill had said, I think we need to, you know, enter into more conversations, kind of, you know, collectively to to figure out. The 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 best way to, you know, build support. Um, you know, from the from the city on how to how to, you know, foster this through or or bring this bring this along, but um. I think the the message from the D C P L A is that that we certainly support um the board of trustees on this project and. Um, you know, we're ready to to engage in conversations on how we can, you know, make that happen.
Super, thank you. Uh, are there any questions of anyone or uh thoughts, suggestions?
No questions, um, but I know that I I was just gonna offer that if you all are needing like an additional trustee. I do have somewhat some time in the summer, so if you're needing like another teammate, I know Teresa, you're super busy. You wear a lot of hats, um, so I'm down totally down to be a proxy if you need like a partner on the on the board, Dr. Lex.
That's perfect, Christine, uh, I will, uh, I mean, you're you're up to date at this point. And what's happened. Uh, I don't know what your schedule's like a week from Friday, but you know, if you have some availability, maybe you can, you know, kind of uh. Run Aaron around to look at the various libraries and, you know, other possible sites in the city.
Yeah, Fridays are great for my schedule, so I'll I'll connect with you offline and and coordinate with you around that.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Justine Santos, I will now hand you the the hat or the baton. So you can, as long I don't volunteer anybody, it has to come from their willingly, from their heart willingly, so. I hear that you wanted to do this, so please do so, and um. And I do, yeah, I do apologize if I'm short, um, at this, so, and um. You know, I wanted to go back to what Dr. Lex was saying, um. The synergies of our the two organizations, you know, the the. The board of trustees or the trustees and the um D C P L A. Um, I I I don't wanna, I don't want you to think that we're totally separate or that. I am not supporting, you know, the D C P L A, I I do support the T C L, D C P L A. I am still new, but they have been there for the city of Daly City. They have raised, you know, countless amount to support, you know, the libraries and. My hat off to everybody that is on that board, including yourself, Dr. Lex. So please express my um sincere apologies to the to the board, Mr. Dossi. Um, for being absent and not being available. Uh, I will do my best, but I trust that my fellow member right here, Ms. Justine Santos, will take over. With Dr. Lex and we're looking forward to that subcommittee report coming next to our meeting. We'll just have to wait for the for the city, you know, regardless of all the projects that we come up and we wanna push year to go. But if the city don't approve it, it's still a sit, we still had to wait patiently and you know. The bees are not going anywhere, it's the people that will go away, you know, but we'll just have to be patient. Um, with what they wanted us to do, hopefully that they will come around. And I know for sure Mr. Steven Stolti is on this, so he will push this as well with us. Thank you for that, okay, uh, community engagement library event visits. Um, I haven't visited any libraries, I went to Westlake last week for a quick. Browse to introduce a family that were from um Brazil. And they, so it was a quick introduction to show them where they at. And gave them a ride over there, but I didn't go inside, I showed them where the library is at. And right now they all hold a library card, so that was a, that was a good feeling too, but. I haven't visited any of the libraries, so. Um, I'm gonna give this chance to everybody, did anybody visit any libraries for their personal reports?
Um, I have visited the Westlake branch several times, but as a patron, not as a trustee. And I can just say that, you know, the atmosphere is always very positive, the staff are very helpful and engaging and friendly. And uh efficient and knowledgeable, uh, so, you know. If all of the branches are running as well as wha- what I've observed at Westlake, we've got a terrific system. And I imagine that that's the case.
I have not gotten a chance.
Anybody else?
Um, I haven't had a chance to, but I am planning on dropping by John Daly sometime soon. Um, in part because I need to renew my library card. Um, but also it's it's the closest branch to me, um, yeah, I've been, I've been really cautious. As there's been COVID exposure everywhere I've been finding myself, so as soon as I feel like really clear, I I wanna try and visit that that branch. Within the next few weeks.
Yeah, I haven't been able to um visit any libraries, yeah, either, because I've been like actually in L A visiting family. Um, but I I hope to to visit the libraries before I move in in August, um. So, yeah, I actually cannot make it to the next meeting in July, because I'll be um on a plane to Chicago, so I just realized that today. So this is actually my last um library meeting with you all. Yeah, it's a trip.
Oh, no.
Dropping this bomb on us, Lauren.
I know, I just realized today too, I was like, oh, man, it's my last meeting.
Okay, well, thank you for the reports, um, so I challenged the three of us, um, to find the library. Or just gain a conversation with one of the staff, either going there as a patron or a trustee. I sometimes I never introduce myself as trustee, I just go in there and. You know, being us, um. And that leads down to our board vacancy, we used to have board vacancy, going to have board vacancy. There's gonna be two vacancies. And though, I'm not sure if we're even close to have anybody or. Anybody to fill those, the first seat, now Ms. Doss is leaving, so that will be two seats up.
Yeah, I have a quick.
So.
Please put in on that.
Yes.
The vacancy, Teresa, because since we have Chloe here, is there, um, they have to be eighteen to be a trustee? Is that, or can they be a student trustee? Because then, if so, I was gonna ask if Chloe knows anybody, any students who might wanna be, but I wanna I wanna confirm first that.
We did have a student trustee previously, so I'm.
That's right, that's right, right.
I cannot confirm a hundred percent, but I believe that should be fine.
Well, we can look into that, but yeah, um, Chloe. If you have any. But if you have any any friend or, you know, anybody that you, or even yourself.
Uh, just. Between the trustees in a way, uh, although this is a public meeting. Uh, I'm aware that a person that I. Told about the vacancy, uh submitted an application. Uh, and I don't know what the status of that application is, other than the individual who filed it has not gotten any feedback. And I don't know how to solve that problem. Uh, we've got to have the city council, you know, take this issue seriously. And, you know, not only move on applications that have been filed, but. Maybe make it a point at a council meeting to say, uh, and not just about the library board of trustees, all the commissions. You know, we have these vacancies and we need to have citizens to fill these slots. And we want to appoint you, and let's get a move on.
Absolutely, uh, uh, Charlotte. What I know and my understanding is and what my experience is that. The 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 process of these things don't um go fast or expedite in a way unless. A council member appoints a certain individual.
Right.
If they appoint a certain individual automatically, it's going to put in. You know, the process, it's speedingly happen. But when, this is just my two cents, but then if somebody else, another individual or one of us. Is, you know, telling this individual to go fill the application, i- it's to me, it seems longer. That's just what I'm seeing, you know, I don't know how you guys feel, but you're absolutely right. So, I also feel that we all should go into the council meeting and, you know. As a public comment, we put in our public comments to push it. You know, and the more we push out there and put our voice out there, they'll hear us, that's just one idea.
Are we allowed to know who's appointee? This team, or is that, yeah?
Un- uh, unless you know the person that you want them to go, yeah. But as far as if the council members have their own appointees, then I wouldn't know anything about it.
Well, we each know who appointed us, and by a process of elimination.
That's true, that's true, Dr. Lex, I'm like, wait a minute, do a little bit of math over here on this.
Okay, so, our. Which which is gonna see how long is that gonna take, it's still taking a long time, I think longer than the COVID.
Yeah, uh, Lauren, I don't know if if you're comfortable talking to Rod and trying to put a bug in his ear, you know, before you leave the trustees. But the fact that you're vacating a seat, you know, might make that an appropriate thing to bring up with him and. You know, ask if he could make, try and make that a priority in the council, uh, not just your vacancy, but the other vacancy as well.
Yeah, I could do that, I could talk to to Rod about that, yep.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you, thank you, Lauren. Okay, um, report from Daly City Public Library Associates, D C P L A. We're fortunate to have Brian Dossi.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, um, let's see, we we've already talked about um the B project, so. Uh, so I won't go back there, but we but we are in support of that, we did vote for that. Um, we also voted the other night to fully fund the Fund the Need projects. From the Saint Patrick's Day luncheon, um, our our donations came up just a little short. Uh, but the the board uh voted to uh make up the difference from its, it's basically its fund. To fund the needs, so um that's good news, and then uh finally, and I think, um. Uh, Teresa may have reported out on this at the last meeting, our next uh fundraiser will be in November, on November fifth. And so, and that will be at the Ceremony Shopping Center, and we're still working out all kind of all the details on on that event. But um, we're really excited for it, and uh I know we'll see you all there, uh, and uh. That's really all we have to report out on tonight.
Big clarification, Brian, um, when you say that you fully funded the Fund the Need, does that mean all the projects won?
So there was the, I think there was the three projects, and so all three, all three were were funded.
Amazing.
D C P L A strikes again.
And and if I misspoke, you can quote me on it.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Dossi.
Sure.
Uh, maybe offline, I'll I'll find out some more about the November fifth, um, the fundraiser.
Yeah, there'll definitely be more information coming, it's um, it's kind of a a new, a new uh fundraiser that we're still kind of working out. All all the details on.
Okay, great, thank you, okay, uh, announcements and communications.
I have, I have one.
Okay.
Uh, here, I'll I'll share my screen. I have an opportunity for you to visit the library. Um, we have a a another poetry event coming up this coming Saturday at the Westlake Library. Um, and this is sadly, this is um gonna be our adult poet laureate. Our San Mateo County poet laureates, um, kind of one of her last hurrahs as poet laureate, I'm sure she'll be doing many things after. Um, she's, but she's organized um this uh next, at um. At the Westlake Library with um some poets, uh, at least one of them is is actually published. And um I know that Christine will be there, and um I'm gonna try and make it there, so I hope that um. Everyone else, if you have the opportunity, if you drop by and if you could help us spread the word, we'll be promoting it, of course, on social media.
So, Chayla, I'm curious, what is kumustahan mean? Where it says a poetry reading and kumustahan?
That is a fantastic question, I do not know.
It is, um.
I will have to ask Eileen.
It's it's Tagalog for uh for like a, like a get together, um, basically a a meet and greet.
No, super, thanks.
There will be snacks, as well.
So, meat, cream, and eat.
Kamustahan is like, it has the root word kamusta, which is.
Kamusta, yes, I heard of that. Oh, at the o'clock, okay. Wonderful, thank you, thank you, Chayla.
Absolutely, we'll see some of you there.
Okay, um. Nothing. So, we're now agenda building for next meeting, um, I have here the library visits. Um, check in and then a report on. We'll put the board vacancy again on it, subcommittee report. And uh I would like to, to see if we can get a report from, um. From those state parks, the candidates or the visitors that already had the chance to go. You know, use it, um, to see how they, you know. They don't have to be, or it it will be nice if they be on the Zoom with us to see if they can. Share some feedback on how it was, or some pros and cons for somebody like me that I will wanna have a chance to go. Uh, you know, to to share with the community.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we can certainly try and find somebody who would be willing to share, I I can let you know, um, I think there were. Um, because we have eighteen of them and there were only three that were not checked out when I I checked it out.
Oh.
There's that was one, one's still at Bay Shore and one at at John Daly and one at ceremony. Um, since we last met, um, we did convert one at each location that is holdable. Um, but the way our system works, there's um, put making something reservable um is combined with also making it. Uh, transit, so, um, so people may be getting ours that live in other communities and vice versa.
Right, okay.
That's why we we did keep a number of them, that's just kind of a first come, first served.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any public comments?
Um actually, I should have probably said this under communications, but I would like to thank Lauren for her service. Uh on the board of trustees, uh and to say, even though our overlap has been pretty brief. Uh I really appreciated her thoughtfulness and what she's brought to the board. And I'm very sorry that you're leaving, but you know, I know you're going off to uh. Another great adventure in your life and I wish you complete success.
Thank you, Dr. Lex. Yeah, it was it was great uh being on on board with you. And you, Justine, and and Teresa, you know, it's been a few years where we've had to deal with like a lot of vacancies, but. It's cool how we're able to to really step up and um, you know, meet and have all these cool. Reports about how the librarians are doing, so it's it's been an honor and it's been a pleasure to really. Um be on the library board and see, you know, the many potential possibilities that um the libraries could do, so just wanna thank you all.
Yes, and um together with Dr. Lex, we wish you luck. I know that we have been working, three of us, the three musketeers. You know, and uh I appreciate you and thank you for. All the wit and the wisdom that you have put in and, you know, what you shared to help with the libraries. And without a doubt to that where your wings will be, you know, be at that. Again, you will share and spread the love over there and. Your. Stones and you, you know, getting that peace, so hit it, Miss Lauren. And um. Don't be a stranger. Hopefully, we'll see you again. Thank you again for everything.
Yeah, Lauren, your commitment, um. I didn't make it short and sweet, um I mean, you know, like you're my friend and I'll save all the gushy stuff for. Your party, um but I just wanna like really honor your your presence and the commitment in this space and I think. Like having you as a co-trustee and even folks like Teresa just reminds me of. How deeply important it is to have educators as part of like our library community. I'm like, you totally brought that into here and in your thinking, so. Deep appreciation to you and I'm excited to see where your next journey takes you. About to do some big things up at U C L A, so. Yeah, keep us posted and updated.
For sure, hopefully I'll see you all around when I visit.
Okay, so without anymore, um.
I think Dr. Lex wanted to say something.
Uh I was just gonna tag on to what you guys were saying and invite Lauren to. Come to one of our future meetings and give us a trip report on what it's like to have moved down and be fully engaged in a graduate program. And uh you know, it's just a couple of minutes and we could probably even accommodate you in the agenda so that. You wouldn't have to sit around and wait until the end of the meeting.
That would be very interesting.
And hopefully the, all the other two seats will be filled by then. Okay, so the meeting is adjourned. I wish you all the best for this week. Enjoy the weather. No, this is too hot for me. Um I like the fog, I like the fog. Um and be safe out there. Thank you, Chloe. Thank you for being here. Continue to be that poet with thoughts, you know, and. Just go explore, go crazy. At the same time, have fun. Be safe out there. Um uh Christine, thank you for all the hard work, for being here and committed. Mr. Dossi, share our love for D C P L A and Jayla. We can't do this without you, Jayla. We appreciate you. Words cannot express how much we appreciate you being here. Have a good week, everyone, and I'll see you guys later. Bye bye.
Thank you.